Next, we have the item number eight, which is discussion and directions to city staff regarding city council and public works authority meeting rules. The honorable city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Corey Adkison, city clerk. Again, a pleasure to be with you this evening. This item is a continuation of our October 9th workshop. And just to refresh your memory and the public's memory, at that workshop, we discussed the possibility of adopting rules for city council and public works authority meetings, just like the meeting we're in this evening. In that conversation, the feedback that we heard was that it would be appropriate to establish rules that are in line with our values of transparency, accessibility, efficiency, and effectiveness, but also balancing that with making sure that items are clear and understandable to members of the public, not to create a Byzantine system of rules that are hard to understand, but again, accessible and transparent to the public. So in lieu, instead of adopting Roberts Rules or something of that nature, the feedback that we heard was it would be better to build our own rules that are applicable just to us, you know, not the 700 pages of Roberts Rules, but maybe six and a half or so pages that are appropriate for the city of Edmond. So since that meeting, we have drafted some rules, which are attached as part of this packet. So one thing I want to note here is that the rules that are drafted are, you know, we could change everything. It's nothing that's set in stone at this point. It is entirely a draft, and these are your rules. So we really want to incorporate any feedback and perspectives you have when we're having this conversation. And so just to get into this a bit, and please feel free to stop me as we're talking, there's two kind of, two parts to this. The first part is some changes to the internal staff agenda policy, and there's two portions to that. The first proposal is to move public works authority consent and discussion items before city council consent and discussion items. We feel that this will help items flow a little bit better at the beginning, especially if we have a more defined general consent category. And the second part of this policy change proposal is to provide written guidance on what items do and do not go into general consent. And so just as a reminder for members that might be, members of the public that might be watching this, you know, a good, good idea when you're talking, thinking about what general consent is, is it's still something that's being considered in a public meeting. There's information in the packet on the agenda item. The agenda item has to be listed on the agenda, the detail of the purchase, what the proposed action is. Again, there might be detail in the packet that provides the background. There might be a staff member's contact for you to be able to ask questions about the item, but it's just a matter of is the council going to discuss the item? That's really the line you draw on what is general consent versus what is not. And so, you know, there is a portion of our agenda that we've always called general consent. We don't really treat it like a true general consent in parliamentary procedure. And so the idea is having a more defined consent category will let us dispense with that, those items quicker and move on to the discussion items. And so the idea is if we're, if it's not in consent, there would be someone up here giving either comments or a presentation. And so when we're talking about maybe providing some guidelines for general consent, this is based on a slide that was shown in the workshop, but basically saying that it should be in general consent unless, and then there's all these categories, you know, we, a public hearing is required, maybe by law agreement or other policy. A council member's indicated before the meeting that they want to discuss the item. A council member has indicated they have a conflict of interest and a separate vote needs to be taken. They're going to step out of the room while we take that vote. Well, we wouldn't want that to be on consent because they can, then they wouldn't be able to vote on that. So conflicting recommendations, maybe this board has said one thing, another board has said something else, or maybe staff is not in agreement with the recommendations of boards, all those different hypotheticals. I'm going to skip the next three and do the end, and then we'll come back. A presentation is necessary to explain the agenda item. Discussion is necessary to provide direction on the agenda item or otherwise not appropriate or catch-all that may be applicable in certain situations. So where I think we got hung up a little bit in previous conversations on this was, is there a dollar amount for certain items that items should be in general consent or should not be? If it involves, for example, a purchase or approval of contract involving, involving over this dollar amount, does it always need to be discussed? If it's a change order, a contract amendment where the total project cost is over a certain dollar amount, does it always need to be discussed? If it's a supplemental or transfer for appropriation over a certain amount, does it need to be discussed? Our purchasing policy and state law provide requirements for things that we bring to council, so that when, when items are on the agenda, generally that's because they are required to be heard by council. And so functionally, you know, I, I'm not saying that there isn't a example out there that this is 100% true, but I would say generally, you can put any dollar amount into general consent if you wanted to. I think I use the example of another city that put a $32 million project into general consent. I don't know if that's a good idea, but that's, that might be a more general function of just what the law allows, as long as it's considered and voted on in a public meeting. But I think there probably is a dollar amount that could be considered. Originally, when we were looking at other examples, there is no good example in Oklahoma, unfortunately, of drawing this line. Numbers that we heard from other institutions were in the neighborhood of $500,000 purchases. Other individuals were communicating that maybe it's $100,000. So I, this is the first point. I would just like to stop and, and take a moment to ask council if there are any perspectives on what these dollar amounts should be.
I think, knowing that we can always, one, two, three, there are all these other ways in which something will be discussed and considered and not a general consent item, I don't know that the monetary amount is as important as it may initially seem, because certainly if a council member, like number two, a council member has indicated they would like to discuss the item, but like you, I, and I guess, let's see, where the total cost is over, I don't know that six is, is necessary, because what if we have a large project, but there's a change that's a thousand dollar change? To me, that should be a general consent item. So I think more five and seven, there probably are numbers that might make sense.
And I, just to emphasize what you just said, you know, I, in, in this list, I'm, I'm contemplating the idea that some council member has said before the meeting that they don't want it on consent. Well, regardless of what we do, as far as putting it in general consent, every council member is still going to have the right to pull it from consent in the meeting. So if, if they feel, if any, a single individual council member feels that it needs to be discussed, it will be discussed. It's just a matter of the regular practice and where we put it in the agenda. So if there was a council member that said, I don't believe that general consent should exist, like we should discuss every item, that's going to be the way that we operate under the rules that are proposed.
Now, if something's not a general consent item, that doesn't, or does it mean that the general public can comment? Or if we bring it, am I understanding correctly, it's general consent? We vote on that whole group of general consent items as a group? If it is for discussion or consideration, then not only discussion by the council and mayor, but also by the general public, or not necessarily?
When I'm, when I'm using the terms discussion and consideration, I'm using that as a matter of council discussing the item.
Okay.
The items that I would say the public would have a right to participate in would be public hearings.
Okay, okay.
And you bring up an interesting idea. We don't have to put a dollar amount in all of this. We could strike all three items and just say, you know, again, is there, do we want to use the other rules to kind of make this decision of whether it goes into general consent? But again, there might be a dollar amount of, if it's over a million dollars, we always want to talk about it. I mean, I, again, that's where this thought process came from, so I...
Mayor, what's been your history on it, as far as thresholds and amounts? What have you seen work?
Well, good question. When we're talking about the council up here, those numbers can be high at times because of the experience of the council of doing amendments or putting contracts in place. Those, I mean, we give, it could be a million dollar or two million dollar, or it could be a 14 million, or it could be an $81 million. It depends on the experience of the council, what has come across their desk. My concern is, is with the citizens. Even when we say it's $500, sometimes it's like, because they don't have the experience of, in their own life, of, of doing that, of a $500 contract, or, or let's take a more realistic, a $2 million contract. And so when I, when I was thinking about this, again, I can't remember if I had a dollar amount the first time or not, but now it's, it is, it is, it's a whopping, this number's huge that I'm thinking about. It's 0.00, because the reason why I say that is because there's going to be someone out there watching that says, I don't understand, what is that amendment? We have amendment, we have Project A going on, and we, just like tonight, we said, this is the First Amendment Two. So the count, we would say, okay, we see the packet and all that, but is that clear? Is that the clearest way to present that to the citizens, that, that amendment for $100,000? What is it for? Why? To go forward? It just, to me, it, it doesn't add much time to, it gives the clarity to the, to the community. And I don't know how many people have, have you ever signed a $14 million check before? You know, so it's, if you don't, if you don't have that experience, then sometimes it's hard for you to think about it. If you, I've signed a $14 million check before, so...
I guess the question, just coming back to the original thought process behind this is, you know, we're, we are happy as staff to do a discussion, a presentation on every item on the city council agenda. That's why we bring staff to the meetings in case they're called upon on, on an item that's been identified in general consent. It's a matter of what council's desire is that we're trying to identify here. And if you would like us to do a presentation or comments on every agenda item, we certainly can do that.
But is it necessary? Just because it's in consent, I mean, it's not in consent, there's no requirement that there has to be a presentation on it, or...
You can organize the agenda however we would like to. I, I think the idea is we're trying to draw a line over what should, what, what are presentation items and what are not? And that's the line we're trying to draw here.
Well, is also the line items that we will vote on as separate items versus a general group of the general consent items?
It's true. That is also a large function of a general consent portion of the agenda, but there's no reason that you couldn't take action on multiple agenda items in the discussion section either.
You like it the way we're doing now?
I, I guess I'm just struggling with why we need five, six, and seven, if we have all of the other tools to pull out things that we think should be either voted on separately or have a separate presentation or separate discussion by council. But also, and I'm, but I never want the public to think that we're trying to downplay or think that something's not important, or sort of slide it in in some respect. And so I think I, that's why I appreciated your comments, that every item on the agenda is there with full information, with the contact person for staff members. So if a member of the public is looking at the agenda in the packet and has questions, they can ask those questions. They can reach out to council members. If they reach out to us, then we would likely pull it out for separate discussion. And, and so it, it feels a little arbitrary because there might be a matter that doesn't have a big dollar sign on it, but really deserves separate voting and separate discussion. So I, I don't know. I'm just, those are my thoughts, is I don't ever want it to seem like, oh, we're just blasé about things that are under $100,000 or what have you, but it's, it's really a matter of, I guess, being respectful of the community's time and trusting that people will hopefully look at the agenda and the packet information, and if there is something they want to delve into further, there's ways to do that.
I think one possibility here would be, you know, I, and I think you're speaking to that core value of transparency, that idea that we want the public to, to understand, we're not trying to do anything behind closed doors. This is all part of a public meeting. Again, questions can be asked. That's why we produce the agenda and produce the agenda packet. One thing we could do is we could take these three items out, and again, as Mr. Murdoch was saying, you know, we're not necessarily having to reinvent the wheel. We could do things a little bit similar to how we're doing them now, and we can get your feedback on what's working as we move along. And if every time y'all are saying, oh, put that out of consent, well, we're going to learn to not put that in consent anymore. So that would be one more thing we could do.
I think, I think that's a good idea, and we all get the agenda previously. We all look over it. We're all discuss it with the different departments and with the city manager and city attorney if needed. So like Kristen said, I think if there's something that we find that we have a question about and we think it needs to be discussed, we can pull it and just say, move it.
I think the other matter to bring up in conversation here is, as far as the right to pull items from general consent. So we're talking about council members having that capability, and we'll get, talking about that in the, the rights of audience members versus council members in the thing. So what is proposed right now is that if a council, and we could add language to the agenda on the website, all this explaining this, but the idea would be that if an item is listed on general consent, it wouldn't be up to a member of the public to say necessarily at the meeting, hey, can I pull this? What they would do is they would contact their council member and, or the mayor, or all the council, and ask one of them to pull it, and it would be up to a member of council to pull it from consent. And that, that's just the contemplation, the idea. It doesn't have to be that way, but, but that is one potential option.
Steve, has there ever been, in your opinion, over the many years, a particular item that has caused a wrinkle or controversy or some challenge because it was a particular nature or level of dollar or type of contract that you would feel wouldn't be appropriate for like a general consent? You'd see, like, because you're on the back end if something sort of goes off the road that has to be corrected or addressed. Is there anything that stands out to you if you were saying, hey, I would have this threshold or this, this item or this type of contract not fall in there because we get questions or we've had to deal with stuff in the past? Anything stick out like that?
Oh, there's been certain purchases that we've had over the years about certain items, which we normally have had questions about prior to the meeting. Oh, I can think of maybe fire, fire engine bids sometimes, golf cart bids, sometimes that have been maybe, I don't know if controversy is the right word, but there've been a lot of questions raised by maybe several bidders and things like that. And so we would, maybe they might be on a consent agenda for purchasing, but then we would pull those for discussion because either the council had received questions or staff had received questions, and so we pulled those and considered them. So the fact that it's on a consent agenda, I think that the mayor's always said, if there's anyone in the public generally has a question, then we'll, we'll stop and take their question. And if we want to pull it from the consent agenda, we could, we could do that, or we just address their question as they came up. You know, most of the controversial items, again, most of the items have had a lot of discussion. A lot of times, there are land use items, and so those are normally public hearings anyway, site plans or rezonings or things like that. That has led to the most discussion, but, you know, from time to time, there's been some, some issues primarily regarding purchasing and things like that, that we'd had, that we didn't know about, or we had normally put those on a consent agenda, but we pulled them, so...
So it seems like, following on Councilor Mugg's kind of comments and feedback, that we have tools to pull something, like if, because that generally in my very, very short time, like usually it's an email or a call, hey, I don't understand this, or explain this, or, and that's usually what leads to something being pulled of, hey, we need, we have, need to have a presentation or something like that. So it seems a little less about the amount. I could, I'll make up an example, but say we were going to provide CARC funding for a certain external, you know, organization with some bid. It might be a little amount, it might be only $20,000, but it might be a very big deal, or there might be part of that contract that is important or needs to be, I don't know. Like, so it doesn't necessarily follow the amount each time, it's more the type of action or the context behind it, or the history, or the, like Steve mentioned, if there's been a little bit of controversy on people feeling like they couldn't submit a bid or something.
Again, I, I think it's important that if we're going to utilize general consent more as is conceived of in Partly Pro and kind of under our proposed rules, that we would want to make sure that citizens are aware of how to ask questions, how to contact their council members, again, making sure that they understand this is the pathway. If I'd like to discuss an item at the city council meeting, this is how I can do that. And I think that's something we can certainly bring. Not only could we put it in the FAQ that we put on our website that we give out at the meetings, but we could also make a, you know, a first introductory page of every agenda that explains all this stuff, if that's helpful. So I, I think we could, we could come up with some ways to, again, make sure citizens understand, you know, how, how can I do these things? And how do I ask questions? Like, if I just don't know what to ask, who do I call? And the city clerk's office is always happy to take those calls. So are there any other perspectives on general consent before we go to other portions of the...
Just one of the question or statement here. So if you look at our current agenda for the night, and our general consent items started at seven A, we had seven, we had one administrative item, and then we had actually four purchases. And the way I run the meeting is that even though those purchases are under consent, I stop and read them for the emphasis to the community of, this is a purchase, this, this is the amount, this is who it's going to, and partially in that, just to put a little bit of highlight on there. And that, and that was something I developed when I moved from down there to here, because I thought it was important that the citizens understood the, we were putting a little bit more emphasis on educating them about the purchases we were making. It was, because sometimes a general consent, it could just, it can go quickly. It can go quickly, and you'd be, and next thing you know, the city, the council just spent $10 million, and nobody even said it. $10 million never got said. And so...
So Mayor, if I understand you correctly, that's a kind of preference that you've adopted. It's not necessarily one of the council rules, and I've always appreciated, I think, as much as you have to read and read and read, but I like the point of that transparency of, maybe we adopt that if it's a general consent, that at least it's read out loud so that people can have in front of them, but then also here, I like, I like them having that, so it's, it's publicly said. I didn't realize before it wasn't.
Yeah, no, that was a, something I adopted based on sitting up here.
So would you say it's accurate to say that you'd be supportive of the idea of publicly reading all items, whether they're in consent or not?
That was, Councilmember Robin said, oh, I was just saying, I was just giving the context of why I was reading purchases. It's up to, if others want that, that's, I...
I think the purchases is fine.
Purchases. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, clearly, if there's two commas in a number, it shouldn't be on consent. If you're going to spend a million dollars or more, there ought to be something and not on consent, in my judgment. And you had a meeting, I know with me and maybe others, on a dollar figure. You ask in those pre-meetings for a dollar figure that somebody had in mind, if they had one in mind. I don't know what that averaged out to. I think I said $100,000. I don't remember, but I think that's right. So the purpose of this is to streamline the agenda process and make it less confusing to the public, is that right?
Again, the purpose is to, I would say, every, every, when we started this project, the project was to develop the set of rules that council would generally use for most meetings.
Right.
So that there was some consistency in how we apply that. So again, creating kind of the general list of how we treat things would fall in that level of consistency. Now, of course, I, I can appreciate and agree with the idea that transparency is important. And so I think that if, if the comments, I'm, I'm hearing council of, if there is, you know, maybe it's not a dollar amount, but maybe it's just a, a common sense number that's a little bit more nonspecific, but I think, I think we'll learn that number. I think we, we'll, we'll see what falls within that category and doesn't. And if council, if, if y'all are pulling items from consent every time because that number is too high, we're going to know to drop the number, if that makes sense.
Yes, sir. Kind of sort of. So it's either on consent or it's not. And if it's on the consent item and it's asked to be pulled, then it's not.
If it is, if it is a consent item and it is asked to be pulled, it will be pulled and considered as a discussion item.
Right. So if the objective is to streamline the process, have transparency, and I heard you say a moment ago, we're going to, we might possibly have to figure out how to make it for the general public, provide additional information for them on how to operate under the new process, then we're not making it simpler. If we've got to go back and start rebuilding the will to inform the public how to do that, then we're not making it simpler. We're not making it more streamlined. And so my, my objective is, and, and these are my thoughts, with public funds, every penny is accountable, and we're responsible to spend those dollars, or not spend them. And so for purchases and amendments and all of these things that can possibly create controversy or fussiness, or why are you spending those dollars, the more public comment about it, the better. That's my viewpoint. Okay.
Corey, were you just, were you basically saying, I just need to know how to put the agenda together? I, I think that's what you were saying.
Yeah, again, I...
And which, which makes sense, because we just need, we're just trying to establish some ground rules here, and whatever rules we have, if we like them, great, stay with them, and if you want them changed, here's some possible ways to change them. And it's always been that, that if it's in consent, it's not discussion, period? True?
Again, I, I think that's where this conversation started, is that we don't really treat consent the way some other cities treat consent, where you vote on 40 items at a time, and you're done with that, and now you're on the discussion items. That was where this conversation was born out of. That doesn't mean we have to do that. And I, I think Mr. Murdoch brought up a good point. You know, if this is something that's not helpful, which is what we want it to be, if it's not helpful, we can keep doing the things, that we can keep doing the agenda the way it's done today.
Sure.
But just with respect to this particular item?
Correct.
Because I do think, I mean, there is a lack, it is confusing, it's not always consistent, and I think, I think there is a real need for, towards transparency. I mean, consistency, clarity, all of those things are important, and so I think that's what we're trying to establish. And because we, I, I mean, I think there's probably a need, whether we changed, changed anything with how we do this or not, there's a need for the public to understand how you engage, what you do, what's happening. So I think, to Councilmember Moore's point, I think we, we need to figure out what our rules are and then communicate them. So I don't think any of the decisions necessarily towards these rules are saying, I don't know what I'm saying now, but does that make any sense? It is confused, it's confusing to us, it's confusing to me sometimes, why something appears at one place in the agenda and another time it's in a different place, and what does that really mean with respect to engagement or... So I appreciate this process because... so I appreciate this process because this is lining out what are the rules are for us as well as the public.
And when, when, when they can ask questions or not.
And we haven't really quite gotten to there yet, when is, when is it a public hearing, and when is it not? When, when does, um, the mayor have the discretion to welcome questions or public discussion, even if it's not required? And so maybe some of that is more just up to the mayor and his personal preferences, or her personal preferences in the future, but, I like clarity.
Yeah, but one of the, on that, the, the discretion of the mayor, one of the things, you know, we were having some of the earlier meetings was that we did want some level of consistency, didn't matter who was in the seat.
Right.
That.
That they knew that if somebody stepped in here, here's your guidelines.
Right, here's guidelines and all that, uh, of course, there's always, because the, the mayor is the presider of the meeting, and there could be ebbs and flows based on that, but, does, it's, it's like, if I wasn't here, Mayor Pro Tem would come over and sit here, and the meeting would flow just like, basically, if the, the mayor was here, that was the discussion there, and, but also, to, to give that, um, structure, and also the structure for the council, for them to understand their, their rights, and when they set up here, or what they can do, and, and be, be consistent. And then, as we said before, even for the public, the public sometimes sits there and, and they would like to speak, and so it's at, historically, at my discretion, versus, or now, if I even allow them to speak. At that time, if it wasn't a public hearing portion, um, so. We're just trying to give some, some more structure there that for the public, some, some clarity for them, and for whoever's sitting up here with the dais.
I like that, I bet we've just completely confused here, haven't we?
Well, what I heard is always err on the side of transparency.
Always.
And I think that that's valuable, um, when we're, if, if, maybe we go back to the idea of we do it as it is today, in the sense of, it's a little bit discretionary from staff's perspective where it goes in the agenda, and, um, you know, we can, we can incorporate some of these ideas of why we would put it in one or the other, and, again, council would be able to pull that if they wanted to, but, again, if, if it's, if it's spending money, if it's, if it's, you know, again, does it smell wrong if it's sitting in the spot of general consent, well, then it doesn't need to be there, and so, um, I, again, I think we can, we can definitely take the perspective that we need to err on the side of transparency, which, of course, is something to be lauded, so. Um, with, if there are no additional comments on this section, move to the next slide. Okay, so, in addition to the, uh, proposed policy changes for the internal staff policy, um, there is also a proposed, uh, city council, Public Works Authority rules document that was included as part of the city council packet, um, I believe, um, yes, and, um, this is something that if council chooses to move forward with this, uh, would be adopted via city council and Public Works Authority resolution, um, and the idea is just to give y'all something to work off of, that was the, the, the feedback we heard at our workshop, was give you something in writing of what works and what doesn't work, so, again, would appreciate your feedback if we're going in the wrong direction, if there's tweaks that you would like to see, this is really what this meeting is about, to hear your perspectives. So, um, I'm gonna summarize each section, but I'm happy to talk about any sections in detail, if you would like to discuss them in detail, so please just let me know, um, so, starting with section one. Section one is our general expectations for meetings, um, attendees are expected to behave in a civil and respectful manner. Uh, you know, we're not allowed to shout, yell, threaten people, no other disruptive behavior is allowed. Um, there are some specific topics and types of comments that are prohibited, including political campaigning, commercial advertisements, profanity, et cetera, these are, tha- that list is from your current citizens' comments policy. Um, we're also noting, um, you know, that the chair, uh, tonight would be the mayor, um, may limit unrelated, unnecessary, or redundant comments to maintain order and conduct business, um, and some other matters, uh, which we can come back to. Um, in section two, we define who the chair of the meeting is, so generally, that's gonna be the mayor, is gonna be leading the meeting. If the mayor is absent, it would be the mayor pro tem, and if the mayor pro tem is absent, the three attending council members would elect a temporary chair from amongst themselves for that meeting. Um, so you are allowed to do that if both the chair, excuse me, if both the mayor and the mayor pro tem are gone, and that is from, uh, the city charter. Um, and then we also note that the chair is responsible for leading meetings, directing the order of business, maintaining order. Um, here, we've also provided that, um, what we'll call the parliamentarian section, so there's a bit of a misnomer in uh, parliamentary circles that a parliamentarian rules on matters of procedure, that is not the case, the, the parliamentarian advises, they provide advice to the chair who makes the decision, so, in this case, it would be the mayor that's deciding matters of rules and procedure in accordance with our rules. Now, they could consult the city attorney for advice, or the city attorney is designated, um, and then maybe that's, you know, a whisper to, to the right, maybe that's a, we're gonna recess for five minutes and then come back and deal with this, but there is an allowance to, to say, I, I, I need a second to talk this out before we rule on that matter. Uh, moving to section three, um, this is the section, so we, we talked about this at the workshop, about um, abilities for council members, providing the defined rules for council members to add agenda items to the agenda. So the first one of these just kind of set aside the issue of, you know, any individual council member can do your boards and commissions nominations, as we always do, so you have the right to do that. And then the second one, uh, just to give you something off, to work off of, is born out of the Norman model. So here, we're proposing that for any other type of agenda item besides boards and commissions, any two members may direct the addition of agenda items, and that that addition should be provided to city manager at least seven days before the related meeting, with the idea it would take some time to get it on the agenda, et cetera, so. In some ways, this could be considered like a motion and a second, but it's not a majority, which we would want to stay away from because that would be a violation of the Open Meeting Act, so any questions on that section?
What's the, uh, or, what's the, uh, so, seven days, what, what now is the notice as far as our Open Meetings Act, when an agenda has to be finalized and posted?
So it's, uh, for a regular meeting, it's twenty-four hours excluding weekends and holidays, for a special meeting, it's forty-eight hours. Um, but I would say for, for example, tonight's meeting, um, the staff deadline to put an agenda item on is actually twelve days before the city council meeting, there's steps for legal review, steps for departmental review, et cetera, and so that's a contemplation. I, I'm certain that, um, you know, in, in the appropriate, appropriate circumstance, um, you know, maybe it's a recognition item or something that doesn't involve a lot of, um, prep work, maybe it could be less than seven days, but I think this is for, like, actual items, like, we, we wanna produce a resolution on the next agenda item, well, that's gonna take some staff time to get ready to do that.
I mean, I'd be interested in my fellow councillor or mayor's thoughts around, um, you know, we have the Open Meetings Act, and I've always liked, because we have our meetings on Monday, those tend to get posted, then what on, is it Friday, Thursday?
So we, um, our, our actual deadline for a regular meeting would be Friday, uh, but we generally try to post on Thursday to give as much, you know, notice to the public as we possibly can.
I think we do a good job of that regard, I've always appreciated that. The challenge I have is if, if something comes up, and there can always be, you know, something, some event, or some incident, or, or something, I'd hate to arbitrarily just sort of constrain our ability as elected officials to put something on the agenda because it doesn't fall within a seven-day threshold, and then we end up waiting almost three weeks, uh, to see it addressed on the agenda if there's support, you know, to have it there, so, I'd be interested in others' comments, I'm not sure of the exact amount, obviously, we don't wanna burden staff with unnecessary requests or erroneous motions, but we also wanna preserve our ability to say this is really important, and yes, we want it on this, uh, council agenda, providing it in time for the Open Meetings Act. I don't know what that balances, but interested in other people's thoughts.
Well, is, also, if something comes up and we don't get it on the agenda, can't we call a special meeting?
Yes.
So you don't have, if it's that important, you don't have to wait the two weeks, you can call a special meeting, is, is, is that correct?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Yeah, if there's something, I mean, and, and I agree, probably need to think of a time for that, but if something is important comes up, we don't have to wait till
Agreed.
the next meeting, we can call a special meeting if we don't get it on the agenda in time, is that correct?
I mean, I, I think what, again, this section of the rules was trying to do, was provide some clarity on the right, like, if a council member gets a second and gets this in, it's gonna be on that next agenda, like, full stop. You've, you've met the expectation of the rules as passed by council. I don't think there's anything precluding council from getting things submitted later that might get added to the agenda if necessary, it's that matter of the right versus the, the, the should, I guess.
Yeah, because I don't think I've ever been turned down to get something on the agenda, but, um, but you wanna know, so that everyone knows, this is a, I, I, I agree, so it's not taken advantage of as well. Because if we want something on the agenda, then staff has to prepare for it.
And other council members need to be able to prepare for it too, so if it's not something that three of the five have been intimately involved in discussing or investigating, and then it's on the agenda four days before the meeting.
Yeah. So, I don't, so what?
I, I think this seems very reasonable, and, I mean, these are rules, and I guess there are occasionally exceptions to rules, right? But, I mean, I think as a general rule, this seems prudent.
We're trying to find a balance, and of course, happy to take council's perspective, and that's why we're here today.
You're not going either way, you just say, what would you like me to do?
Yes.
Well, just go back to, uh, Councilmember Robin's question, um, I wanna make sure I get it correctly, so if there was an emergency, you know, almost, it's almost like all bets are off, we're, we're gonna, if we need to meet for an emergency meeting, we're gonna call an emergency meeting. If we have some type of emergency in our city that we have to make a decision on, it's not, we're gonna wait for the two weeks or something like that. If there's some event, and I don't know what, what that could be, but if we have to, I know in the past, we have called emergency meetings in between the two weeks, or the three weeks span there. The other thing is, it, and we've also had things put on the agenda that were not, we couldn't finalize it in the time, that meeting, so we just said, okay, this is our first blush at it right here, come back in two weeks, then we'll get the, say, we needed to do a resolution or something like, that is not in that emergency category, then we would say, come back in two weeks with that document. But we, we would get the, uh, you say the skeleton version of it, put on the, the agenda initially, and then get some more meat on it later on.
Is that kind of like what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it could be thrown on and say, I really, this needs to be discussed, this agenda, however, we don't have to vote on it yet, but I just wanted to know, okay.
I mean, it's kind of one of those things, you know, obviously, you have emergencies, or ice storm, or unfortunate, you know, public safety events, whatever it might be. The other type is, you know, you just might have something that really sort of percolates or pops, and you, and you wanna have a discussion about it at council, um, you know, something that is in the news, or has to do with the budget, whatever it may be, it's like trying to find that balance between, it's a, your main thing to discuss, we would all wanna say, oh, gosh, we, we missed it, but it doesn't really meet the threshold of an emergency, like, you know, it's not, not life safety, but it's, I don't know, I mean, I'm new, so, I mean, I, y'all have been in a lot more meetings than I have, and, and maybe that's, never really happens, the, the scenario I'm describing, I'm just trying to figure out what's the, so in this scenario, if it was seven days, that would mean that close of business the Monday prior, basically, is when we would have to have something submitted to Scott, and you, would, that's the, that would be, that's in the dra- that's in the draft.
Yeah, as written, that would be it, but of course, it's what our council decides.
I think that's sufficient. I think it's prudent, I mean, you know, we do have council comments, if there's an issue, we can say in council comments, this is something we're discussing, it will likely be on the next agenda. We didn't have sufficient time to really research this issue, but we want the public to know that we hear them, we are concerned. I, I just, I don't wanna rush things onto an agenda that aren't ready, and then things are out there that aren't what we're gonna do, and then that's how rumors start, so, I mean, I, I think this as, as the general rule is good. I like it, 'cause I don't think it makes sense to have, you know, two council members going to Mr. Rigby on a Thursday before a Monday meeting and getting something on the agenda, and the first time any of the rest of the people see it is, you know, on Saturday or Sunday, and, you know what I'm saying, that, that's why I think this protects against that, and if it's truly an emergency, then we'll address that emergency, but I, I don't think that's what we're talking about here.
But I also would think that if we had the, the rules set up there where it's two council members, they, say they, they have some item, there would be conversation with the city manager, I'm, I'm looking at the mechanics now, if, if this actually happened, that, that they would meet, and that it would meet with the city manager, and then, I guess there would be some of the city attorney say, is that something that needs to be accelerated in the process of the city getting done, if you know what I mean?
What do you mean? I lost you, I was saying that.
If we say seven days, we're gonna have, to get it done, say something happens within the seven-day window. We have the rule set up that two council members, if they want something on the agenda, they've, they've come to an agreement, yes, let's put this on the agenda, but it's within the seven days. It might not meet the, the temperature of an emergency, but it is something that we need to address. Well, the person who controls the, the, the staff is right here, and if, in that conversation is, he or she, whoever's sitting here, says, yeah, we need to, we need to, we need to get it on there, with the conversation with the council members, it can be, it can be, it can be done. But that's based, but that is,
That's at discretion.
That's a discretionary thing that happens almost on everything, that if something becomes hot, the temperature gets hot, yes, we might have a rule for it, but the city manager who's, is gonna, is gonna accelerate the flame on it or not, that, that makes sense.
I think that should be the exception to the rule.
Correct, yeah.
And not guide the rule.
Yeah, yes, it's, this is, it is extenuating circumstances, but I'm also trying to address.
To address both of your comments, um, I would emphasize that the seven-day requirement is a should. Um, and so, again, I think we're going to, the expectation would generally be that you meet that, and, again, if you have a conversation with the city manager, and there's a reason that it needs to be accelerated, I think that's something that would be a possibility, but speaking to your comment, it should probably be the exception that that happens, so. Um, section four, so regardless of the number of council members attending, at least three yes votes are necessary to approve any motion or item, regardless, um, so, so the idea is even if three members are here, um, it can't be a two-one vote, it's always gotta be at least three affirmative votes to pass any motion or approve any item. Um, unless otherwise provided in the rules, which we'll talk about the exceptions here in a minute, all attendees must be recognized by the chair before speaking, this includes attendees in the audience, and staff, and members of council. Now, it would be the mayor, the, the chair's discretion over what recognition looks like, is that formal, is that him just looking at you? Again, that's something that the chair will make that decision on what recognition looks like, but putting in the rules that it's the chair's discretion to decide how recognition works before, uh, for items and, and conversation. So, we did, you know, I, 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 we talked a lot about consent earlier, and there is a section in the rules talking about how consent uh, wor- would work, the idea that, you know, we would talk about, uh, consent, the number of items, we could talk about reading, uh, purchasing items, et cetera, you know, asking if any items need to be pulled, council members being able to do that, vote being taken, and then moving on, so that is in the rules about how consent would work. Uh, same way with discussion items, and for discussion items, it, it's very similar to how it works today. I think that the big point A, point B difference would be that, um, the motion would be made before the motion would be made before discussion, or what we're calling debate. So, at the ti, you know, right now, generally, what will happen is, mayor will, will have staff introduce the item. There'll be some question period, there might be a public hearing portion, someone come up here. And we'd get through all of the discussion, and then the motion would be made. Kind of just trying to build something that resembles parliamentary rules from scratch. I, I did use kind of the model of Robert's rules of, you, you introduce a motion, then you debate it. And you, and that part of that was what we talked about, of making sure that every council member has the right to speak on every item. They don't have to speak, but they have the right to speak at least once under any, for any motion under consideration. So the idea that you can't move past an item without giving every council member the opportunity to talk about it. And again, that, that might not feel that formal, it, it'll really depend on the chair's perspective and how they wanna run that portion. But that would probably be the biggest difference in the matter of how we would handle discussion items under the proposed rules. And then, again, giving the right for the chair to decide how we would work through other items that are not voting items, such as presentations, discussion only items, et cetera. And then finally, providing for the sta, for the, the chair to have staff read agenda items, keep time, and perform other functions if so, take a meeting in case the mayor wants to have someone else read agenda items when he loses his voice. So, are there any questions on that before we move to the next section? So, section five, this is the chart that is in the rules, which just talks about the various motions that are available under the rules. We've defined all these in the motions detail section on page four. You know, the, the ability to, to move for approval, to amend a motion, to continue, to strike, to refer it, to recess the meeting. Earlier, you know, when we were talking in our workshop, we talked about the ability to appeal the decision of the chair. The ability for three council members to say, we don't agree with that ruling of the rules or procedures made by the chair, and we wanna go in a different direction. Well, this would be the vehicle to do that. The other two that are, that are new on here that we really haven't seen before, the point of privilege, point of order. I don't think you have to say the words point of privilege or point of order, that, that's a little parley pro speak. But the idea behind them is, mayor, it's hot in here, or mayor, it's cold in here, could we, can we move something? I, I don't know why councilor thought I was talking about him. But, or, hey, the technology's not working, I can't hear. That, that is a point of privilege. You don't have to use those words, it's just, hey, I can interrupt someone that's speaking to let you know that something's going on that's really interfering with my capability to be present in this meeting. A point of order is just, hey, I think we're not following the rules, and I need you to decide, you know, think about that for a second. Are we actually following the rules? Well, we should be. And at that point, the chair is called on to make a decision. They either can say, yeah, we are following the rules, and sorry, you don't like that. At that point, that, that would be where you could appeal the decision of the chair. Or they could say, oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, I forgot that, you know, to recognize you on that debate item. And that would be the opportunity for, for us to move in that manner. So, I don't foresee us using a lot of this very, very often. This is for those extreme hypotheticals that parley pro gives you without making it seven hundred pages. So I, we've tried to keep it very generic with, as far as the motions, you know, the required vote thresholds. And I, I, the other thing I would point out is in some parliamentary procedure systems, you can amend an amendment to an amendment, to an amendment. No. What, what I've, what I've drafted language here is, is that, you know, I moved to approve this contract, we're, we're talking about that. Well, someone says, well, I amend, I, I moved to amend that, but we also need to hire them for an extra hundred hours to do some extra consulting. You can make that motion, you can make that one amendment, but you can't amend your amendment. You can make one amendment, you can dispense with it, and then if you wanna change something down the road, we'll, we'll do another one. So the idea is to not get off amending amendments, amendments. The idea is just to dispense with the business that's in front of us.
And just to be clear, cause members of the public have tried to do a point of order, or point of privilege, or suspend the rules, and these are motions that can be made by members of the council or the Public Works Authority, not members of the public.
Correct, and that is absolutely the case, and it is noted in the rules twice
Yeah.
that it is members of the city council and members of the Public Works Authority, the five elected officials of the city of Edmond that have the capability to make those motions. Absolutely.
Pointing out for the general viewing public more than you, yes.
Now, the only thing here is that the part of being recognized, we, we have this unwritten communication up here. Some look at me and, and I nod at them. Others, I look at them, and I could tell by body language that they're getting ready to speak. You know, they, they've, they've done something. And so what, here, just saying that turn inward. So we, we know that we, you'd be recognized, that, know that you're getting ready to speak.
And that's the idea, that it's really, you know, as much as we're talking about consistency, 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 we also heard in our last workshop that y'all's relationship and, and ability to speak with each other candidly, and to have those good, healthy conversations is important. And so, again, it's the chair's prerogative to decide what, how recognition is going to work, you know? It's not, I have to raise my hand, it's just that I can look at you, and it'll be the chair, it continues under these rules to be the chair's prerogative to decide how that works. Any other questions on this one? Okay, I, I promise we're closing in on the end here.
About two minutes.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'm gonna, I'm gonna speed read. Okay, so, items identified as public hearing. Items identified as public hearing, so if you're, to put this in terms of our current agenda items, this would be items where the public is guaranteed a right to speak on the item, maybe by state law, maybe by some other reason. And so what we heard in the workshop was no signups, so there are no signups for this. This is entirely still, you get to the meeting, you have the ability to decide then when to speak. We've also not included any time limit for this, that, that's up for conversation, but what I heard in the workshop was maybe that wasn't a great idea, so haven't include that in, haven't included that in the written rules. What we have included in the written rules is that the chair has the discretion to decide whether you can speak more than once. So the idea that it's not, it might not be an endless supply, but it would be the chair's decision to decide, do they get to speak three or four times, or do you get once and you're done for the evening? For that item. And then finally, and, and this is in contrast to the next one, which we'll talk about for citizen comments, we are providing the capability for all public hearing items for individuals to use audiovisual equipment, but they must provide the presentation to the city at least twenty-four hours in advance. The presentation cannot be obscene or violate the general rules. So the idea that we're probably gonna virus scan it, make sure that it's hanging, and then we're gonna make sure that it's presentable before we put it on the, the TV broadcast. So, that's the idea for public hearings, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna move to citizen comments, and then I'll, I'll ask if there are any questions about these sections.
Is that new, given, given citizens the opportunity to do that?
There's no current language on it right now. I, I would say that it has been the practice. Sometimes you would have a, A, very commonly, you would have the, the, the property developer that might be for a planning item, would have some kind of presentation related to their proposal. But I, I've seen frequently where maybe a, an attorney representing the local HOA, or a neighborhood association nearby has presented on behalf of, you know, a hundred homeowners, and they've presented PowerPoints. And so, I would say it's happened, there's just been no consistent practice, and we wanna make sure that we're treating citizens consistently.
And I think, I, I'm definitely like that. I think, you know, looking at the year twenty twenty-four up ahead, we're just becoming more digital. And it's always helpful when a project has things for it, so if there is a group of citizens, and I agree that we need to make sure it's safe, not obscene, and, like, I like the idea of, for official hearing items, if there's something visually, that would be important. That's really hard to conceptualize through words, I think. I like moving towards a, a uniform way that people can, can display things on that.
Yeah, and, and then, you're bringing up a good point. We are, we are contrasting that, and I'll move to citizens comments real quick. Citizens comment being the, the item on the end of the agenda where you just request to speak, it's not necessarily about an agenda item. It's the same process as the current practice. We are clarifying that you can't give any unused time to another speaker, your, your three minutes are your three minutes. And this is already in the current rules, but I wanna highlight it, that the chair may amend the time allotted for all speakers if necessary to maintain order and conduct business. So if a hundred speakers get up and, and wanna speak, maybe the, the chair might amend the time for every single speaker to the same amount of time of whatever time is appropriate for us to get through all of them. So, I'm not saying that that must happen, but saying it's a possibility in the rules. And then finally, we're proposing no audiovisual equipment access for the, the end citizens comments, with the idea being that for a, a, a public hearing item, there may be specific land use issues or other things that people wanna talk about. Again, with the idea of any item being something you could talk about in, in citizens comments, I, I think we're just working through what, where audiovisual equipment would be used in this perspective. So, the proposal at least is written as to not include that for citizens comments.
The other is, if we ha, is all up for discussion, citizens comments, there's zero discussion, because we can't. So, that makes complete sense.
Are you, Corey, are you aware of any municipality that allows for, I haven't seen any audiovisual sort of citizen in the citizen comments portion?
Not for, you know, so for citizens comments specifically, no, I
I haven't seen it, but I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't something happening out there that you were aware of with your group that you knew of.
I am not aware of any city that, that's done it for the general citizens comments.
Do we, when, when someone signs up for citizens comments, obviously, if they do that online, you know, they're submitting certain information, do they get like a, a confirmation? I've never, do they get a, what happens? Do they get a little confirmation email?
I, I would actually have to pose that question to city manager's office staff that handle that. Casey, if he wants to speak to that.
What was your question?
I was curious, as if somebody signs up, do they get a little confirmation or something when they put their email in and sign up, and says, you know, thank you for signing up, or?
Yes, so if someone signs up online in advance, they do receive an email that says that it is a confirmation, and that it also goes to a couple of different staff members as well. In the event that one staff member's out, we can make sure that someone does get that, and we make sure that we get them put on the list for the, for that night. So yes, they do get that when they sign up.
And, you know, I'm always, I try to think of and put myself in the shoes of citizens of, you know, if they're not a regular, if this is totally, you know, a foreign concept to come ask the city government some sort of question, or raise a concern, or whatever. Public speaking very much might be the absolute worst thing that they ever wanted to do, and are nervous, and don't know quite what to do. Would it ever be possible if someone signs up for a citizen comment, to just send them a little form, kinda note with, you know, the link to the, whatever rules are adopted, that just says, thank you for signing up for citizens comments? So we kind of address some of those expectations, like, hey, when you come to the podium, announce who you are. You won't have the opportunity to X, Y, Z, you'll have three minutes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe as like an auto reply. I'm just trying to help those that
You bet, you bet.
are nervous and kinda spend the whole day kinda working themselves up a little bit, and they get here, and they don't, you know, you can tell they're just, you know, it's tough.
Yes, and, and I will say, oftentimes, those people will, will, we'll have a staff member out here before the meeting, and they'll often speak to that person, and, and if someone is nervous or, or has questions, we do get that opportunity oftentimes to talk with them before the meeting, kinda answer those questions or work on them with any of those fears. But absolutely, we can, we can try to get as much information as there, in their hands as possible.
I'd love to see it, whatever auto reply we have, contain some of those helpful hints of just kinda guiding them towards what that might look like, or what the expectations are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Were there any questions or comments regarding public hearings or citizens comments?
On the public hearing part, we, we say no time limit, but the chair has the discretion to, if, if we see the, the presenter come up there with the, the book that they're bringing up to present, it's thicker than the application. You might, if you
Mayor, you might be speaking to what we, we talked about earlier, that the chair may direct, excuse me, the chair may limit unrelated, unnecessary, or redundant comments to maintain order and conduct business. That would be in the general rule, so that would be the chair's discretion. Any other questions about those sections? Okay, so finally, the last piece of, of commentary we heard at our workshop was, you know, identifying what penalties there are for violating the rules. So we did not create any new, we're not proposing to create any new penalties under Edmund Municipal Code. What we're doing in the rules is merely pointing them to what is already in the Edmund Municipal Code. So there are some potential code violations, apologies as I get to the page I'm meant to be on, particularly disturbing public assembly and disorderly conduct. And then we're also pointing them to state statute, there is a provision related to individuals disturbing, interfering, or disrupting public meetings. So again, not creating new penalties, but saying, you know, those individuals violating the rule may be charged with these, with these violations. And that's in addition to the capability of the chair to remove anyone from the meeting for disruptive behavior. Any questions about that? Okay. That's my last slide, guys, I'm, I'm sorry. So, the, the one item that we didn't really put in the rules, but I just wanted to highlight that it wasn't there, that we talked about in the workshop, was the idea of should we have multiple readings or multiple considerations for certain type of items? I think I mentioned to you that Norman, Stillwater, and Broken Arrow, the three cities we compared ourselves to, all require multiple readings of ordinances before ordinances are passed. So I just wanted to highlight that we haven't included any of that in these rules. If that's something you want us to consider, let us know. The idea being that it, I guess it's to give more public notice that we're considering these changes, et cetera. But again, that is not included in the draft rules.
What does that mean, multiple readings?
So the idea is, that, that's probably a little bit more parley pro than I should have made it. The idea that an ordinance has to be considered at multiple meetings, so it has to be on the agenda, you know, the first week, then two weeks later, it could be actually voted on, so it can't be voted on at the first meeting.
And we don't currently have that?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's not a requirement. Again, just wanted to highlight that that was kind of, when we were comparing ourselves to other cities, that was kind of an outlier of our practices versus theirs. Okay, and so my last question, conversation point here, is the path to adoption. You know, so tonight is not a voting item. We wanted to make sure that you'd have a chance to discuss this, and we bring a resolution at a future meeting to actually adopt the rules. And I wanted to pose the question of, you know, do we want to just put this on the next meeting? Do we want to, just as a, a voting item? Do we want to take it to any citizen boards or commissions for their input? Just an open-ended question of, is there any public input the council would like before we bring it for a vote, if that is your desire?
I'd prefer not to have it on the December meeting.
I can make that happen.
But you've taken down our notes, you've heard what we said. Do you feel like it needs to be discussed again, or can it be presented to us, and then we can either say, yeah, you're in a?
We could have it on the agenda item as, one or two ways, as a workshop, and begin, or, and have that discussion. Or it can be a, a discussion item, that public comments can be made, made there also. Have it
I think it's more of a workshop
Yes, ma'am.
thing. And then, once it's, so, to take our, take our, our suggestions, or, and I know you've been listening to a lot of stuff going back and forth, but maybe take it, bring it back, discuss it at a workshop, and if we're like, yeah, okay, golden, then maybe put it on a following agenda.
And I don't know, cause I'm not as familiar with their work yet, I haven't been able to attend a meeting. Don't we have like a citizens participatory committee or something? Do we have like a board or commission?
There is a citizens participation There is a citizens participation committee, but I, I couldn't speak to their exact...
It has to do with community development block grant programs.
So it, it doesn't have to do, and I was just thinking of the name and thought.
And I, I think this mainly has to do with how we run council meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a suggestion? If we could have a workshop in January, and then if, and take as long as we want to review it and make our edits, and then bring it to council at the appropriate time.
Yes, I, I, I like the, I like the idea of not having it next month.
It's gonna be a busy meeting.
Yeah, next, next...
And that's rushing it, I think.
Right, and, but the workshop? I'm, I'm fine with that, council?
And just to speak to expectations for that workshop, so I have noted the various thoughts. There are, you know, I think there is some substantive thought on the policy portion for general consent. I have not heard substantive language changes to the policy portion, so are we just wanting to go through all of this again? And, I mean, I...
Well, I, as you, how we've operated in the past, we, we might not, today, we might not have a question, but tomorrow, we might have that question, so. As we all digest it, I think that we just need to be open, and as we get closer, we can figure out, are we gonna go through each chart by chart, or are we just gonna get to the highlights?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Corey.